Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of tonight, April 17, 2024. It's 7:00 p.m., we're in the La Cooit Room, and I'm going to ask everybody to please speak up because we have like a makeshift sound system here and we may not be able to hear it and people will watch this after they record it and it goes on television. So be kind enough to speak up loudly. And I'll try to do my part. Welcome, everyone, tonight. We're being brought -- we're not being broadcast live. We're on camera, as you see, and some sound equipment. So with that, if you'd stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, the representative of the justice of all.
The first thing we have is approval of the minutes. We have the April 3, 2024 minutes of the meeting. Does anyone have any edits or changes? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve the April 3, 2024 minutes of the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain from that?
Yeah, because I recuse myself from the matter.
Okay.
And approved.
Okay, so approved.
So I'm going to abstain from that.
And the second one is review and approval of the minutes of the meeting from the Joint Select Board and the Planning Board back from December 18, 2023. Does anyone have any edits or changes?
So I do have a comment about it. I don't think we need to approve these minutes because they're already approved, but when I read them, they didn't quite capture some of the feelings and opinions of the planning board members had expressed. So I'm wondering if we can have our board secretary watch the video and do a set of minutes for us kind of in the way that we're used to seeing. I just think that that recording secretary does minutes a little bit differently than ours and that'd be more comfortable with our recording secretary.
So what, you second that?
I abstained, I wasn't there.
You weren't there. What about?
I seconded.
You seconded?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Do I make that motion?
Go ahead.
I make that motion that we have our board secretary listen to that portion of the meeting and do minutes.
They want to denote the existing minutes?
They don't have to be in the denote. Their minutes are separate.
That's right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So great, so good. Next. We have a public comment. We -- because we have a lot of people here who maybe I'll raise your hand if you would if you attend to speak tonight. Okay. All right. I will accept public comment, but I will not entertain at this time anything on quinequisit because that project was closed. We closed that matter. But I will take public comment after we discuss the public hearing on warrant Article 28. That's the article for the indoor recreation area. And in addition, the Mr. Jon Kera, the property at 474 Main Street, 31 Ashuman Road. And I'm going to limit it tonight to three minutes because of the number of people here. So could I have that list, the sign-up list, to see what we have?
I don't think -- I did announce it, I see one.
Did anybody?
Anyone else interested in providing public comment not related to either the zoning article or the development application on the agenda tonight? Other than Mr. Horton.
Okay. David Horton, if you'd come up and give your name again and your address. And speak loudly, please.
Good evening, David Horton with 43 O'Colony Drive from Mashpee. This is in reference to the sewer.
In reference to what?
In reference to the zoning issue over on Ashuman.
I think it's related to the development application on Ashuman Road, Madam Chair. That public hearing, sir, will open at 7:10, at which point the hearing will reopen and testimony on that specific matter could be accepted. So the chair will call you up at that appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. 7:10.
It's approved, not required.
What's that?
A and R.
Yes. The app -- approval not required, which is the initials are A and R, approval not required. The applicant is -- yes. You have to leave.
Madam Chair, I have a conflict of interest to the applicant and I will recuse myself.
Okay. All right. It's a Triple M Management Company LLC, 29 and 41 Echo Road, Mashpee, Mass. Assessors Max 18-3-9, paren 29, and 19-3-8-41. Two lots. The purpose of the request is to combine parcels into one to become lot 1A. Okay. We have a drawing. We have the notice of application. We have the letter to our town planner authorizing Matthew Costa or representatives to speak on this. Triple M is not in arrears of any local taxes. We have something signed by the town treasurer. And we have -- excuse me. We have quitclaim deeds conveying these two pieces of land to Triple M Management Company. And we have the drawing, the plans, showing what they want to do. Do we have proponent or engineering coming up tonight?
Yep.
Yes?
Okay. I'm Jake Fricki with Cape and Islands Engineering. As you indicated, this is a plan to combine two adjacent lots on a previously approved road, Echo Road, for the purposes of sort of reconfiguring the -- they've built two structures. They're both on one lot. The lots needed to be brought together for the business purposes. It has more than enough frontage on a previously approved way, and so we feel it.
Would you tell us and the people in the audience what the criteria is for our granting this A and R?
The A and R needs to be no new frontage is created and the -- if there was frontage created, there would be a subdivision plan. In this case, we're taking two previously existing lots which have acceptable frontage and we're combining them together so it now has extra frontage. There's no -- no, we're reducing the total number of lots.
Okay, and it fronts on Echo Road.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. May I take a motion?
I have no questions.
Does anybody have questions?
I don't know.
No, okay. Motion?
And I make a motion that the planning board endorses this A and R plan?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guide us through what you want us to sign?
Oh, right. Yes, if you could sign the right here. E2U and then the date. It's at the top.
So do we put date approved and date signed as the same?
It's the same, yes.
And it's today?
It's the 17th, I believe.
And Karen signs over the top.
We have to sign this, huh?
Do you want us to sign that?
No, just the Mylar.
It feels like they moved the tables.
Thank you all.
All right. It is a little past 7:10 and I'm going to open the meeting on the warrant article to review the article to see if we propose it for the May 6, 20 -- or recommend it for the May 6, 2024 town meeting. To review the following zoning articles proposed for action at the May 6, 2024 town meeting. Warrant Article 28 to see if the town will vote to amend Section 174 B-18 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw Table of Use Regulations. Do you have the public notice? I thought I had it and I don't know why I don't see it.
Do you want me to read it? Or do you want to read it?
Okay, this is the Mashpee Planning Board public notice. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 17, 2024, at 7:10 p.m. from the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North in La Cooit Meeting Room to review the following zoning articles proposed for action at the May 6, 2024 town meeting. The warrant reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 174-25B-18 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw Table of Use Regulations by adding the letter SP in the column identified as I-1 as follows. SP, special permit. I-1 is industrial zone 1. The article would authorize indoor recreational facilities in the I-1 zoning district by special permit. Currently, indoor recreational facilities are authorized in only the commercial zoning districts." The full text of these articles may be reviewed in the Office of the Town Manager/Select Board and Planning Department. So what I'd like to do now is move to continue this matter, this public hearing, until after we have the next hearing, you know, at 7:15?
Maybe 7:40.
It was set for 7:10.
I would -- I'm assuming your intention is to get to the next public hearing and come back to this item?
Yes.
I would imagine you might need more time than a few minutes. So I would continue -- I would ask the board to continue that hearing until 7:30, 7:45.
So are we going to -- which, what?
Okay.
What public hearing are we doing for?
We're going to go to the 31 Ashuman Road.
And then keep that open?
And then we're going to keep this open and continue it and come back to it.
So we only need five minutes to open up the other hearing? So I would make a motion to continue this meeting to today at 7:20.
Second.
How can that work, Mary? Because we have this.
Which one are you going to hear first?
We're going to hear the Ashuman Road.
Okay.
Or come back to this warrant.
So how long will the Ashuman?
So we can finish the -- or do the Ashuman Road one till 7:40. It's going to take some time. All those in favor?
Well, let's do a motion. Who did a motion?
Motion. I'd like to continue.
Dennis, did you -- I make a motion to continue this till today at 7:40 p.m.? Deanne, who seconded?
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Public hearing, so you -- Mary and town planner will have to be excused because they have a conflict. I open the public hearing on applicant Jola Jonkera. Location 474 Main Street, 31 Ashuman Road. Applicant proposes to construct a 4,000 -- let's correct that, Mr. Corrigan. 6,000 square foot commercial building for retail sales of water-related products with indoor and outdoor storage. The Mashpee Planning Board public notice, which we have to read. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 3, 2024, at 7:10 p.m. in the La Cooit Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North to consider an application by Jola Jonkera, property owner, requesting a special permit to construct an 6,000-square-foot commercial building for retail sale of plumbing and water-related products with accessory storage at a currently vacant property addressed to the 31 Ashuman Road slash 474 Main Street, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Assessors Max 27-21A and 27-21B. The subject lot is located predominantly in the C3 limited commercial zoning district with portions of the parcel bisected by the R5 zoning districts and is located within the groundwater protection district and light industrial overlay district. This petition is made pursuant to the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw Sections 174-24 paren, close paren, paren 1, close paren, and 174-25E13, 174-45.6D Article 13, Groundwater Protection District, and 174-25.1 Standards for Development in C3 Districts. Okay, I call the agent for the proponent, Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. I beg for the record Attorney Christopher Corrigan, representing the applicant, Joel Jean-Claire, owner of 474 Main Street and 31 Ashuman. At the last meeting, we, you know, kind of explained what this project was. Again, 6,000 square foot building on a vacant lot in the C3 zoning district. I don't necessarily want to belabor kind of the background of the project. I do want to hit on some highlights for this board and what we're here to obtain with a special permit. I want to be clear to this board that this applicant is not asking for any waivers or any variances from any of your bylaw conditions. The zoning criteria generally for the C3 district is a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. We are providing over 98,000 square feet of lot area. The minimum frontage for the C3 district is 200 feet. We have frontage of 200.6 feet. The front yard setback of 75 feet needs to be provided from both Route 130 and Ashuman Road. We're providing 76.1 feet from Route 130 and 245.9 feet from Ashuman Road. The rear yard setback is 20 feet. We're providing 21 feet and 107.7 feet. The minimum lot coverage in the C3 district is 20%. We're asking for 6.1% lot coverage. So we need every single one of the criteria generally for the C3 zoning district. The specific C3 criteria under 174-25.1 requires a minimum of 40% of the lot to be undisturbed. We are providing 45.4% of the lot to be undisturbed. Additionally, after revegetation, there'll be natural of over 50%. Again, we need that bylaw requirement. That is 174-25.11. And the C3 district ability cannot exceed 20,000 square feet. Our proposal is 6,000 square feet. I know it was one of that as number two under the C3 specific criteria. One of the things that came up at the last meeting was whether or not we could have access on 130. 174-25.13 states unequivocally that where you have -- where you front on 130, but you have access on another road, you have to use that access to the other road. The development clearing, number four, is the development clearing must be 100 feet from the next residential zone parcel. We do have 100 feet. That's shown on the plan. You can see the line shown on the left, showing 100 feet to the pavement. The signage, lighting, noise shall not have a significant adverse impact on neighboring properties. We've provided photometric plan to its possession. As we testified at the last hearing, there is only one machine that works. It's a forklift. It doesn't operate continuously. So we don't see any significant adverse impact regarding noise or light as such. Again, also to note that, you know, this operation, this business is closed on weekends. So it's only open Monday to Friday and closed on weekends. I will note, for those of whom went to the site visit, the existing building directly abuts residentially zoned areas. And there's never been any complaint from those residential zones, residential neighbors. And the sixth criteria under the C3 specific, off-street parking has to be on the side or rear of the building. We're on the side of the building. We also are required to have nine parking spaces with one handicap space. We're providing nine parking spaces and one handicap space. So again, when we're talking about impacts and neighbors, traffic, and kids of life, we only have nine parking spaces. You know, so we're not going to have 100 cars coming in and out of there. There's nine parking spaces. The other issue to note is obviously we're also in the groundwater protection overlay district. So in this particular case, we're not -- there are no hazardous materials proposed for this area. However, we do require a special permit because we are going to be 2,500 square feet or more than per surface in the driveway in the building. So that requires -- that is not as of right in the groundwater protection overlay district to use a special permit. But as long as we can show that there's proper drainage, stormwater management, then that is allowed by the special permit. And again, we provided the stormwater drainage is all part of our application. It's been reviewed by Mr. Pesci. So again, when we're looking at the zoning criteria for the C3 district, both generally and specific, we need every single one of those requirements. We're not asking for any waivers or any variances from those. I do think that there is a misperception about the impact that this particular business will have on the community. Again, there will only be -- I think the last -- from the last meeting to today, they did traffic counts. The most amount of traffic they had during the day was 12. 12 cars, trucks going in and out. The least amount was five. So it averaged between five and 12 cars. Now, they were.
That's weird.
And as far as deliveries with trucks that are bigger than just pickups, as we said, there could be days where there are no deliveries. So there may be days where there are no deliveries. There'll be no deliveries on weekends. And there could be, you know, there could be one or two on any given day. Again, that is not every day. So we think that the traffic concerns are -- you know, there may be traffic concerns of what's going on there now going to and from the pickleball court, but those are going to be there irrespective of whether this business goes in or out. So we think that the traffic concerns are speculative at this time. We've provided you the information from our applicant of what the traffic is. So again, we've met all your zoning requirements. We're not asking for any waivers. We're not asking for any variances. And we think this will be a low-impact development. It's been approved by the Historic District at their last meeting. There will be additional streaming provided through fencing to lessen the visual impacts. And we'll also -- there was, I think, a requirement that nothing can be stored more than 6 feet in house for any opening. Again, with that, we are going to be lessening any visual impacts. So, you know, that's what I have to say at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The development team is here. Roger Dwar from Bracket Engineering to answer any questions. Joel Jean-Claire, Roger Brooks from Pinklight is here. And we also have a representative from EJ Land. Each day, however.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Now that I'm fully apprised of everything, I'd like to tell you and you confirm that I've got the right information here.
Yes.
Under 174-24C of the zoning bylaw, the Mashpee zoning law, it says, "A special permit may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use or development is consistent with applicable state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, and plans," statutes and bylaws. And you've said that and I have looked through the C3 statute and recognize that you have done everything required. And as you say, you're not looking for a variance. You're not looking for any special favors here.
Yes, sir.
It is interesting that only 6.1% of the total lot coverage is covered in this property where 20% is the maximum. Also, you have 45% undisturbed land, which is reflected in that green.
The dark green, correct.
The dark green.
And I will say it down in chair. The orange areas are going to be revegetated. So that actually brings it up over 50% when you include the orange areas.
Right. Now, we've already addressed it. The butters wanted the entrance to be on 130 and the bylaw does not permit it to be on 130 because there is a road right there and it's opening up on Ashuman. Your table of uses, which is part of the Mashpee zoning bylaw, allows this kind of business, plumbing supplies in a C3 zone, but it requires a special permit, which you're here for today. With respect to photometrics, I guess we have this all along, but we didn't see it because it's on the back?
Uh, I don't know.
Or did we did?
I don't think -- I think it came out after the meeting.
So are these LEDs, dark sky?
Yes.
Okay. So would you tell us you've got these dots all over this -- let's see, all over where the building and the parking lot is. And can you tell us what kind of lights and how do they go? Because you dotted each one like this.
So typically, each one of these numbers -- again, my name is Robert Dwar with Bracket Engineering. The lighting plan was put together by was it Rab Lighting?
Rab Lighting.
Yeah, Rab Lighting. They're a lighting supplier and they work with engineering contractors to provide the lighting plans. But generally speaking, each one of the numbers that you see is a reflection of the amount of humans in that area. So as you get closer to the building, you'll see that there'll be some that like lights, you know, knocked into the side of the building. And so you'll see brighter numbers up there. But as you get up towards the street, you'll see that like it goes down to zero, you know, essentially, even when the building's fully lit, there's no reason to have lighting on it. There's no parking. There's no pedestrian access in that area. So even when the building is fully lit up, there's no light in that area.
Okay, so you're in compliance with Section 175-2515 on lighting and any noisy or odorous activities shall be located so as not to have any significant adverse impact on adjacent or nearby residential parcels. Does the lighting comply with that?
It does.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment about this?
Sure.
So I received this on -- for the record, I'm at Pesci Engineering, the engineering consultant for the board. I received this, I think, when all of you did, on the 12th of April. It's one of the requests that I made in my original comments letter of 2nd of April. I think it's certainly indicative that this is lighting provided around the building. And there's virtually no parking. I'd say -- I shouldn't say virtually. There is no parking lot lighting at all. I will -- I want to recommend something for your consideration and perhaps the folks in me, Jay Prescott, would agree. I'm just going to point this out for the board and then I'll point it out for the audience. Down here where the gate is, there's no lighting. There's absolutely no street lighting. And I would think it would be advisable to place a street light, even only I would think it would be advisable to place a street light, even, even only a twelve-foot mounted street light, parking lot light, right there at the gate for safety. Because someone, God forbid, from running in there, doesn't see the gate, even if there's reflectors on it, and hits the gate and gets into an accident. So I would probably want, if I was, if I was, if I owned the property, it's certainly to unlock the gate in dark periods of darkness. As the owner, I would want to have a light down there. Even though your headlights would be on, it would be, I think, safer to have the gate illuminated.
But the light would not glare out to the neighborhood, it would be right there.
Correct, so just looking at the type of lighting on the side of the building, it drops off to less than a foot candle. God, it looks like it's thirty, forty feet away, forty feet away, almost fifty feet away, it's almost, it's down to almost a tenth of a foot candle, zero. And that's more than fif, this is more than fifty feet away from the edge of Asshument Road. So I think that that impact would be minor and the safety benefit would be better. So I'm just pointing this out, Rob, that, you know, right here or right here, either side.
Sure.
Would make perfect sense to put something there for safety. I, I, with, with periods of darkness in the winter, I don't know if you need any other lighting out here, but I darn sure worry about having you have lighting and closing gates at six o'clock at night.
Absolutely.
There, so.
And I mean, this is, you know, our, their business hours are, you know, four PM in the off season, at five PM.
Right, you can easily get your, move the stuff around you need to see to move around before it gets dark part of the day, no question. That generally is probably not what they do on a regular basis. They take deliveries, they leave some outside, they leave some inside. So the whole purpose I heard, though, was this building is bigger than what they have now, because now they'll be able to accommodate a lot more stock inside.
Correct.
That was the discussion, so that helps.
That, so you, that condition you can let me very easily.
So I just recommend that additional, one additional one, this be approved of that.
You agree on his peer review to take all his conditions? So we incorporate that in a special permit? Could you put that one back that we just had?
Certainly.
Okay, I heard, unfortunately, I was not able to be at the site visit, but I heard from hopefully a reliable source that the, the Historic Commission requested a solid cedar fence, and it'll go somewhere, oh, I have it on my drawing here, but it's going to go behind the trees, the trees, yeah.
Can you move the podium?
Pardon me? Turn it, yeah, you can't see it. Yeah, thank you. It's going to go from here along here, so you, you're not going to see anything, it's going to be an eight foot high fence. And the Historic Commission has asked that the piping and the materials that would be in the yard would not be higher than six feet, so you will not see over that fence. Over here, this is all going to be, they described it as a black painted chain link fence, and I wondered about that myself. My, my concern, and based on what some of the abutters were concerned about, was as you walk by here and you look in, where are you going to see the piping and, and the materials in the yard? Could you, could you show me?
Well, you're not going to be able to see.
What is your name, sir?
Joel Jupler.
Joel, okay, Joel, Joel Kater?
Joel Kater.
Somebody's walking by, they don't want to be looking at pipes, where will you put those pipes?
Well, they're storage area, you see it, that's why we're going to put the fence, the fence covering from this corner all the way to here.
Okay, and you also will be storing in the warehouse?
Cover, yes.
So you won't be storing over here?
No.
Okay, great, you just answered my question. So we're not going to be looking, it's just going to be a parking lot, here's a loading zone?
Cover.
Okay, very good. Now, this area here is, is undisturbed, it's fifty eight thousand two hundred and ninety-eight square feet, it's grass and it's going to be.
It's wood.
It's woods?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so natural.
Can I just correct that just for a second?
Yes.
That, that area isn't necessarily fifty eight thousand square feet, that's the entire, the Asshument Road parcel, right now it's essentially technically two separate parcels that are joined.
Can you, can you point out what's fifty eight thousand?
So fifty eight thousand, and on this plan it's like that there's a line that crosses here.
That's the issue, that's fifty eight thousand. So the triangular piece that is pointing up to that line is the zoning line.
Okay.
And this, this zoning line here.
Let's let the people see what you're pointing to.
The zoning line that cuts down right here, that's the residential zone area, and that's about sixteen thousand square feet.
Undisturbed, so, you know, they're not building in the residential. You know, this is what the bylaw says, this is commercial land here, C three, so they've done everything they're supposed to do. Now, I'd like to address the main petitioner's petition, Mohammed Saad Fad's petition, and I'd like to go through them, and maybe there's some things that you could accommodate on that. I know one of the, the chief complaints of some of the abutters was they wanted the road on one thirty, the driveway, that can't happen, that would violate.
We can change that bylaw.
He can change.
Okay, do we get to sit down?
Wait, just a minute, just a minute, I'm going to let you speak.
Yep.
But I just want to see where the applicant stands on some of these things. Okay, I'm looking at Mohammed Fad's petition. The asphalt parking lot is too large. What, what do you have to say about that? Why do you need that large parking lot?
We do need a large parking lot because partly it's not as large as it looks on the plan, but part of it is just for, you're dealing with contractor trucks that might be towing, you know, they might have, a lot of times they'll have like a skid steer, like a backhoe thing, or a small excavator on it, so they need a lot of room to turn around in there, as well as the few deliveries that they do get from the eighteen wheelers need some maneuverable room as well. And also any fire apparatus that, you know, may.
Fighting pumps.
So can you give us a percentage or some kind of calculation? Well, actually, we're not, even if you do store outside, we're not going to see these pipes because that fences there.
Correct. And again, your bylaw only requires forty percent undisturbed, and we're providing that, we're providing more than that.
Forty five percent undisturbed, yes. Let me see here, there's someone who spoke the other night, if I could, you just bear with me a minute, I've got a million pages here. Looking for the, the beginning, I think it's here. The April third minutes. Joel Clifford spoke, and he is, I'm reading exactly what the minutes say. He is the president for the Old Colony Association, he's worried about pedestrian foot traffic. This is a pedestrian friendly street with pickleball courts, a dog park, and sports field. Asshument Road is heavily trafficked all year long. There is a bus stop right at Old Colony Drive, he would like the board to consider the entrance to be relocated, which is a moot point. But he's saying here, Asshument Road is heavily trafficked all year long. I know there are eight pickleball courts, times four people playing, that's thirty-two people in the summertime, it's, it's very crowded at other times, you know, when the weather's good, between the Heritage Park and the Sports, which is built into this neighborhood, the Dog Park, the Pickleball Court. So you could probably put hundreds of people, they're not, not talking about the tenants or the people who live in these buildings. So how many people are we talking about coming to your premises every day, with everybody? Average.
So again, based on the information that's provided by EJ Prescott, they did, they did their own analysis since the last meeting, and the maximum amount of cars they had on any one day was twelve.
Twelve, so even if they had twenty, that palls in comparison to the number of people who are right there on that property.
And you also got to remember where we're located, we're at the very beginning of Asshument.
Yes.
So these truck, anybody who's coming to utilize this facility is not going any further than where this building is, so they're not going past the condos, they're not going down to the pickleball court, you know, they're not, they're not going to be really picking up any speed because they have to go immediately right into the building.
And they get off one thirty very rapidly to drive into that parking lot. One thing that was mentioned, would you agree that you would not allow any, you know, trailers or yard or equipment, you know, drivable equipment, vans, delivery trucks to park on Asshument Road, they have to go into the yard?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, because that was a problem on another.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, all parking would have to be on site, no, no, on the street.
Ed, Mr. Pesci?
Yes.
Town engineer, is there anything in which the applicant should do before the board would vote on this matter?
So I think we've talked about them revising plans to respond, you know, their revised plans to, to properly and adequately respond to my previous engineering review comments, the comment tonight about the additional light at the gate. I've worked with, I've reviewed Bracket Engineering work quite a bit in the past and on the, for the island of Nantucket, so I'm the consulting engineer for the planning and zoning boards for the town of Nantucket, and I've done a lot of review work, they're very good about revising things and addressing things, and then working with me to try to resolve things that may have come up that we didn't talk about, but for the most part I have no, no reservations whatsoever with including that as a condition, because they're, they're very adept doing it. So I don't think there's anything further for us to talk about.
Questions from the board, do you have any questions, Mike?
No, I, I think you guys do it pretty well. It's pretty clear.
Excuse me, excuse me, the hearing is still going on.
You're going to speak.
I heard the word you're going to vote on something before we.
No, I, I didn't get you on, but.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to have people who are going to speak on this fill this out if they will, so I know what, how many people we have.
Well, the only other thing that we talked about and that we discussed on the site that is a concern for the abutters was what are they going to be, the Old Colony folks when they pull out, what are they going to be looking at?
They're not going to be seeing the yard, they're going to be seeing woods.
Right, so when they, when they pull out, the Old Colony driveways over here, when they pull out and look straight ahead, excuse me, right opposite the detention basin pretty much, they're going to be looking at the fence, trees first, then the fence, not going to even see the detention basin, because it's going to be behind the fence. It's going to be down three, four feet below that street grade, so they won't even see it. They will see the driveway, but that's all they'll see. So I, I felt like we stood right here, members of the board that were present.
Show us, show us.
So we stood right here on the site and looked towards Old Colony, we couldn't even see it. Could not see any, there's buildings on this abutting lot, obstructing part of the view too. So there's trees and buildings, and these are trees without leaves right now, we couldn't even see the sign for Old Colony Drive. So I really feel like there's enough screening already provided, and they're proposing that we'll provide adequate screening.
All right, so, pardon me, you want to speak?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. One of my concerns is the trucks coming in there. I said that right from the beginning. I worry about it's coming down in the summertime with their bikes.
Yes, yes.
And a truck being there, that concerns me. And we can change the bylaw so you come up on one thirty.
It could be, it could be, but not in time for this project. You can't adapt it to like this project.
I worry about, I was thinking this summer, you get, those grandparents, the grandchildren come over, they get on their bikes, and there's this goal to the, to the ball court, but they're going to come down there, and all I can dream of is a truck coming. It may never happen, but what I'd like to see is you put up a sign a couple feet down from the driveway, trucks do not go any further. Your truck must start, you know, big trucks, and then maybe on the other side.
But the only thing I would say to that is, a truck that doesn't belong going into ours, they go beyond that, I mean, I don't want trucks, so we have a sign that says, you know, EJ Prescott entrance.
You can put your name on it, JDC Trucks for JDC, enter here, do not go further.
Yeah.
Because the trucks that go down further, the pickup trucks, unless there's a house being built and a cement truck goes down. On the other side, maybe we could put like a bench where the school kid can sit there so they're not playing on the street or something. Maybe, I'm just trying to make it as safe as we can.
I don't think that a bench would be anything.
So the bench would be at the stop sign by one thirty or Old Colony?
Wherever the board would desire.
Yeah, where do you want?
On Asshument.
I, I know, it could be the stop sign at Old Colony, or would it be the stop sign closer to one thirty?
No, I want the, the stop sign for the trucks.
No, he's looking for a sign past the entrance to the site.
No, I understand that, but I was asking about the school kids.
The bench.
The school kids, you know, when the bus, everybody stops, but I'm thinking when they're waiting there, when I was a kid, we stand playing, we maybe run out the street, they don't see the truck coming, so maybe have something they can sit there for.
But where, where is the stop sign, I'm asking, where does it go?
There's no stop sign.
Kind of be stop sign, the bench for the kids.
On the sign, coming out of Old Colony. Right there where they wait for the bus after the bus stops.
You gotta be a little concerned with a bench where they would concrete, otherwise it wouldn't concrete, because it's not.
Yeah.
You don't want to make a place that's a concrete right there either.
Yeah, but they're concrete, they wait for the bus. They stand waiting for the bus, and if you ever notice that some kids pushing, staffing, I just, I wish you'd come off at one thirty, that's the whole problem.
Agree.
I'm trying to make, I mean, you have the right to do what you're doing, and you meet all the criteria, you put an eight foot high fence, you block, and you go out. I'm just really concerned about, you know, the, the trucks coming, the big trucks, not the pickup trucks or the fourteen foot box truck that may come in, but even trucks with trills.
Well, what, what would work in your idea, what would you want to see?
One thirty.
Well, no, no.
But we just can't, we can't do that, the bylaw doesn't allow us to do that.
Well, we could change the bylaw, but it takes two hours.
Yeah, you have to go to town, but that's what I want to see, I mean, I'm not going to, I really don't go stop this, because they have rights, they're rights, they meet all the criteria, I'm just asking to be a little more safety minded. Sure.
I just had that, I mean, we.
Show me a sign that says, a sign that says EJ Prescott entrance.
What that would be?
Maybe even a left turn only sign out of.
Yeah, like this sort of truck, you know, I'm sure the big truck, you know, they're not going to go past, but there may be somebody on his cell phone, oh shit, shoot, I missed that turn, you know, and what's he going to do, he's not going to, he's going to back up and then just.
Okay, good, good idea. Dale?
Same thoughts, just the safety, you know, for the, for the residents, you guys are, it's a commercial spot, but it's in a neighborhood, it's quite as simple, we're checking all the boxes, but we're not checking the, I'm checking the big box. People, you know, that's what we do it for, right? That's what we do for the people, but you have to check in all your boxes, that's great. Safety of the neighborhood.
And I think, you know, there is a representative for EJ Prescott here, so he's obviously, you know, listen to the concern, and I think they'll be, you know, aware of, you know, trying to be sensitive to, you know, you know, what the concerns are.
Rob, Rob Hanson, he's in Florida, he's on Zoom. Rob, speak up, because the sound system is awful.
Okay, how, how, how's this?
Good.
Good.
Exhibit?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I, I went on the site visit, I heard a number of residents voicing their concerns and wishes, and, and the, the truck safety is, is a key issue. The thing that I think will mitigate that to some degree is that if you're on one thirty and an eighteen wheeler that you're driving, and you're turning out to Asshument, Asshument Road, you're, you're probably almost at a stop to make that turn.
Sure.
And then as soon as you make the turn, you're making a turn into the driveway. I don't think a truck would be certainly over twenty miles an hour in that short distance before it turns it. And, and I really can't see it as a broad blot to, to approving this special permit.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, do I have that list of the abutters who each? Alright, now, do I have that list of the plotters who each just speak again? Okay, one thing I would ask is, try not to be too repetitive, I'm giving, oh, we need, where is that clock? Oh, do you know how to run that?
No.
Who does?
Trying to figure it out.
You wanna just tell me when the minutes are off? Okay, everybody has three minutes, so be succinct and say what you wanna say. Yes, Sophia?
I didn't know I needed to put my name on a list.
Okay, what is your name?
Michelle Brum.
Michelle, what's the last name?
Brum, B-R-U-M.
Okay, Michelle, you're in a platter?
I am.
So we just have five people speaking tonight, is that right? Okay.
I gotta figure that out.
You gotta figure that out, okay, yes, Mohammed?
I'm sorry, this is not the comment session, this is public hearing, public hearing. So you don't put a limit on it right away outside, because I do have four pages to read.
I'll limit on way one. Finally.
I mean, I have to speak. You spent, did you clock how much time the applicant, the proponent spoke? No, I mean, you're discussing, so we have to present ourselves. I don't know how long this won't take, I'm not gonna be boring, hopefully there will be no repetition. But here I'm talking technical, because I presented technical point that I value, and we have to present ours for comparison.
Well, you know, the, the board, the chair has the right to limit the time. I will ask the board, what time would you like to allow? Because we've got three, four, five, five people here. How many, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Alright. Five minutes, does that be satisfactory, Mohammed?
I have four, four pages, I'm going to go into them, I'm not blah, 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 right away. There are people who do that professionally, you know, I'm going to speak slowly, clearly, so we get their numbers and their stuff. I could summarize a little bit, but I cannot go over stuff, four, five points. It's not like.
If I gave you ten, if I gave you ten minutes, I would be able to give everybody ten minutes, and that would be like ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, fifteen minutes.
It's a public hearing, it is not a comment, a comment you have the right, but not a public hearing. You have, we, we did not clock the proponent time. Did you clock it? How much was it, three minutes? No, we're not clocking, they express themselves.
This is, it's having a plan, so we have to have the best time.
It is okay.
If anybody wants to give up their time to speak, give it to Mohammed.
Okay.
Let's give it to Mohammed.
Alright, I will, I, I understand what you're saying, Mohammed. I, I will give everybody five minutes, and if the person who comes after, which would be, well, you're not, you're number three. If, if Catherine Drastic, I think that's what her name is, wants to give up her time, and you can continue, five more minutes. You know, that's what we'll do. Okay, come on up.
That's the first person on the list.
David Horton, first.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Please sit down.
Yes, sit down.
You know.
Speak loud, please.
Forty-three Old Colony Drive, in Mashpee. Been a resident for nine years. Just some observations, it said that the entrance is not directly across from Old Colony, but at the top of the bus.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure.
The mic's right behind you.
Also, you know, as has been mentioned here before, a lot of kids and dogs are walking up and down Asshument all day long. You know, I've walked my dog on there numerous times, and there's plenty of traffic going up and down there. Another concern with the heavier trucks and the semis is Asshument Road really don't even handle sixteen cars over and over again. You know, it's involved in industry, and I know what kind of damage trucks can do to roads that aren't built to handle. And really, it's just a quiet residential neighborhood. And I heard him talking a lot about the stormwater runoff and whatnot, but I'm curious, has there been any other environmental impacts that he's done? Can you answer that?
I, I, I'm not, I can't address you, sir.
Well, who in here can?
So we're not in any conservation of the area, so we wouldn't.
Yeah, it's not conservation, it's, it's where you're putting the septic and the drain field, you're more than a thousand feet away from water. So they're, they're within their rights to do this, exactly what they're doing.
Well, I guess, in, in summary, I would just say that there's a quality of life issue, there's a truck traffic issue overall, the safety of the overall neighborhood. And I would just recommend that you go on, you've been, thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Diane Pocknet?
I'm just making notes at the start, Mohammed.
Oh, thank you. I am, this is Diane Pocknet, I live on two Asshument Road, my assistant, Mohammed, is with me, he's a lifetime resident, now at the beginning of Asshument Road. And I heard things that really, really upset me, because I'm thinking, yeah, we've heard about the legal, legal rights in the zoning laws and all of that sort of thing. But I expect you people on the planning board to also think of Mashpee and the people that live there, and the neighborhoods, and the children. And not just that they're within their rights, I don't like hearing that, you know, they're within your rights to do what? To ruin the environment? We're talking trees, we're talking people, we're talking children, we're talking roadways, we're talking safety. The impact on the neighborhood is going to create noise, it is gonna impact the safety of children. I've never known a business that would just want one or two trucks to come in and out like this, this has been explained to us. If you're a business, you want business, you want people going in and out, don't you? So that means a lot of volume. This, in this business, you think about Mashpee, what is it doing for our people here? Is it creating jobs? Is it worth, you know, creating a structure and putting something in next to people in the neighborhood where we know there's traffic? The traffic increases, of course, in the better weather. We have, we have a park down the street, we have pickleball, we have neighborhood, we have kids on bikes, I have a grandson who lives within my house, my home. They're out there. We're talking big trucks here. You ever start thinking about, you know, just, are they within the legal ramifications of listening to this, you know, somebody presenting business? This is a neighborhood, we live within the neighborhood, you have, you have a showing here of people who want you to care and take that part into consideration, not just are they within their zoning rights? If they can make it better by going in 130 and it takes a little longer, maybe we need to consider that. I, I want you to really think about the impact this is going to have, not just are they within their rights to do this legally. The big trucks are gonna have impact on the road. You know, the just, the, the impact on the neighborhood, the traffic, the noise, the safety, the environment. Maybe those aren't things that you can just look at, you know, are they within their legal rights to do so? But you can think about, this is gonna have the impact on the kids and the people, and the people, the noise, the quality of their, their, their life, their property value, everything else that all of you have to think about, we do too. Think, take those, those other issues into consideration when you make a determination like this, especially the safety and the future of our children and our neighborhoods in Mashpee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed Fad?
Yes. We have added people's names to petition, not added, I mean, people have added their names to the petition, the same one. We totally, quite, and I have copies.
I, I'm having trouble hearing you, Mohammed.
The petition that I presented the first time, part one of the public hearing, we have added people.
You have added people to it?
Yeah, it's like two, we go one person. So basically, this is how much.
Is it the same thing, but with a couple?
Yeah, same thing.
Would you like to hand that out to the board?
I would have it if you want.
Don't spend the time on too much. Here, just give it to me, I'll do it.
Go on, Mohammed.
Okay. This letter, I will give it the copy to Madame Chair. It's addressed to, no, I have already.
Oh, for everyone.
Dear Madame Chair, thank you for accepting a neighborhood testimony on this matter, etc., etc. I'm trying, I'm going to read, jump as fast as I can.
Okay.
So, number one, the proposed use, the proposed use that is being presented is not allowed, is not allowed in commercial C3 zones. And is only allowed in industrial zone I-1, which is effectively that's happening. One last question, why aren't the catfish I-1 with this special permit, etc.? So the use proposed at the location is not allowed. Property is Zone C3 in the Mashpee Bylaw, Section 174-25. It lists all the uses allowed in the C3 zone, it lists. So the application lists the use, the application that's presented, as a commercial building for retail sales, retail, so many lines under, of water-related products with indoor and outdoor storage. There are two elements here in this statement, retail and indoor and outdoor, outdoor storage is an issue also. So first of all, this description of a use as listed is misleading. This company is a waterwork supplier, distribution. It is not like me, I go to Home Depot, or I go to Motel Look, a couple of items. It's not like small box car, it's big trucks only. From their website, they are called a trusted ally for professionals to want to move water and wastewater and stormwater wherever it needs to be. Basically, we are swearing, for example, and guess who is the main one that provides piping and the fittings? You could tell who it is, Everett G. Prescott Company. These water-related products include, but are not limited to, pipe, hydraulics, and fittings, connections, clamps, couplings, saddles, backflow preventers, vaults and service boxes, as per their website, their website. These items are large, requiring outdoor storage and heavy equipment to move. And also, they have their little six thousand square foot, two stories, so basically the bottom, they have a little cave, they could put stuff in it. So this is not a retail store, not a retail store, but an industrial corporation, a wholesale business, distribution, and storage facility. And as such, is not allowed in C3, very simple. It's part of the bylaw. Somebody said, you won't change the bylaw, go ahead, but this is a bylaw, we cannot start skipping stuff. That's point number one. So point number one again, this, the application states the proposed use is allowed by the Zone Bylaw, Section 174-25E13, in the table, in the C3, as with the retail sale of water-related product. This is false. Here is section 174-25E13, and in it, if you read it, the only item that's related to water or piping or fittings is called plumbing supplies. Plumbing supplies, not distribution of big pipelines, which actually you should have seen in the industrial zone at the 89 Industrial Drive. So the proposed business is not listed in the chart. And at the last meeting, the applicant admitted the business is not plumbing supplies, which is better. In fact, it is not any type of business allowed by Section 174-25E13. And by the way, they could say as much as they want that they have fixed a place for us, it's a big place, they give us this much, much. No, it's a business, the business, and this is what they want to do, and it's business allowed or not, it doesn't matter how they fix it. They have to fix it, but the business, the C3 zone is most important. It is the one that prevails. The same way I heard it before, that we are residential, and they have part residential, and the majority, the principal part kind of prevails, which is basically the C3. And in this case, C3 is, goes above all sorts of things of fixing the trees, they have to fix the trees, but C3. Sorry for this paraphrase. So the, the proposed business is not listed on the chart, etc., at the last meeting, etc. Anyway, this shows that the proposed use is not allowed in the commercial zone C3, and the application must be denied. Application must be denied. The reason the development feels so intrusive to our neighborhood is because it is an industrial use, not a commercial use, and is only allowed in the town's industrial zone. The company currently functions from 89 Industrial Drive and also 79, which is also the rent probably from the water, Mashwater District. Under a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, recorded in the year 2000. I do have copies of this special permit, which actually, and I have highlighted, the term that says, according to the zoning, etc., the bylaws, it allows for outside storage of waterworks, materials, hydrants, pipe fittings, or property, etc., etc. This tells you again what they care about. It's the main business, distribution of. The building is not important, it's storage, that explain the size of the parking, the gravel, etc. The asphalt, the parking. We are not dealing with the nine places, nine parking spots, and the one that has to do with the entirety one. It's basically the huge parking lot of stuff, gravel and asphalt. I continue.
Are you almost done, Mohammed?
No, this is page number two. I'm going to skip to page number. So we done, we dealt, I'm sorry, so six minutes.
Six minutes, okay. Does somebody wanna concede their time to Mohammed? The next person, Catherine?
We dealt with C3. We dealt at Zone C3, and we dealt with the kind of business that they have. I continue. The proposed project of this type is for industrial use, not a commercial use, and allowed only in the self, self-education. The proposed use is allowed under zoning bylaw, Section 125-25G9, in the, in, in the industrial zone only, it is specified in the tables, bylaws. Which we are not changing right now, we could change anytime you want, but this is what the bylaws are, this is the rules I prefer. This use is not allowed in C3, and not allowed at, at 474 Main Street, etc. Proposed project, point number three, proposed project is wholesale business and storage, not C3. Now, I could go explain it, but that's, that's the title of my paragraph. I wrote in this paragraph, the special permit cannot be approved, why? The special permit must be denied per zoning bylaw, Section 174-24-C2. It says, quote, "A special permit may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use or development is consistent with applicable state and town regulations, statutes, bylaws, and plans." The proposed use is not consistent with town bylaws, and therefore cannot be approved. Furthermore, the entranceway will have a significant adverse impact on neighboring properties and be detrimental to our area and neighborhood. I have here, I'm trying to. Talking about entranceway, actually, there is not, it says, it says correctly, it says, but there is also other notes that says, explains the specificity of the spot, explains that basically if they want to go on Route 130, they could do it from either side. It's allowed, it's not prohibited, not prohibited is the word that is being used in the bylaws themselves. So a special permit may be used only following the procedures specified by the general laws, and may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use for development is consistent with applicable state and town regulations, etc. How many, I'm trying to have just, this is my only question, I'm almost done. Another paragraph, I have, I have one page left. The project that does not comply with the requirements of the Ground Water Protection District and cannot be approved as the project cannot be found to be in compliance with town regulations. as the project cannot be found to be in compliance with town regulations and cannot be found to not have an adverse impact on groundwater quality." So, the amount of proposed impervious surface, the sum of the building, the asphalt area and the gravel storage area does not comply with the zoning requirements for the Groundwater Protection District. Zoning bylaw, and this is a paragraph, zoning bylaw, section 174, 81, allowed users in the Groundwater Protection District. F, land users which result in the rendering impervious of no more than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any lot, whichever is greater, except as permitted under law. So, this, this is the violation. Zoning bylaw, section 174 dash 81, prohibited users in the Groundwater Protection District, and paragraph N, article N. Land users which result in the rendering impervious of no more than 15%, et cetera, et cetera. The same applies to the petition. The project does not comply with the requirements of the Groundwater Protection District and should not be approved. The application must have a water quality report, a stormwater plan and planning plan. We haven't seen nothing. We have just heard that, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Even they have the color orange for the whatever they want to plan, but we don't see a plan. So, per the zoning bylaw, other items which are required for this application, required for the application. So, the completion is kind of incomplete. Water quality report per 174 dash 27. And also, stormwater management plan and design, which conforms to the requirements of subsection 174 dash 27, point 2, point B, point 3. And three, a planning plan. In compliance with section 174 dash 31, footnote 14, which states, where such area, the required buffer area from roads and sidelines is not naturally wooded, it shall be suitable to be planted with, and you understand the gist, basically. There is no plan, they don't have those three items. So, access is allowed from Route 130, and this is the juicy part. That's the juicy part, that could do why access is allowed from Route 130. When the special permit for the corner lot 470 Main Street, everybody knows it because they purchased the rest of the parts, but you could see the green thing, whatever, corner lot. I repeat, when the special permit for the corner lot 470 Main Street, accesses map 27 parcel 21 was approved by the planning board, the planning board, the three lots, which are purchased, which constitute the proponents, whatever, were considered altogether, which means, and 470 Main Street was required to build a driveway from the corner lot 470 Main Street, from its parking lot onto this project's property, which is 474 Main Street, we were talking about, to provide access through the existing parking lot to Main Street, Route 130, exit through Route 130. So, as to not violate the distance requirement between driveways entering onto Route 130 and the provisions that, look, this is becoming a spongy, but you have to talk science, measure stuff. We have a professional engineer, town engineer, they could certify that this is correct. I continue the statement.
Or you have to wrap it up, Mohammed?
I am almost done. So, the intent was, the intent of the whole opening of, the way, the original, the person that has the compound at the corner between Ashu Met Road and 130, the intent. The intent was, in effect, to create a shared parking lot with shared access from Main Street. This entrance way, this entrance way should be used to access any proposed development at 474, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would like to thank the planning board for the delusions, due delusions, in reviewing this application and for protecting the old colony and Ashu Met Road neighborhood. And by the way, the fence, sorry, before I forget, the fence. Somebody said they're going to put on the edge, there's something called a painted black, a chain link fence. We have accepted the issue, it has to be wood or a cost, you know, standard wood. No chain link fence, it's not nice. I have here copies of the special permit that were issued in the year 2000. The company, Asia Prestor, was, is, is a foreign corporation, has foreign corporation certificate to work in Massachusetts since 1980. They haven't changed the type of business, they're always water distribution, piping, et cetera. Can I give you this, that's a special permit, the copy, it's very important for you. Cup of coffee coming up, thank you. Sorry, Rob, you are away from here, sorry.
Do you have the letter that you just read?
Oh, yeah. This letter will go right away.
Did you make any copies?
No, one copy to Chair, you have the ability to copy and get as many as you want. I could email, that's no problem.
All right.
Is the content the same as the initial one you gave, Mohammed? Just has...
No, the petition is something, this is more going in that.
Talking about what he read from.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, this is exactly, this is, this is what you need to make decisions in scientific fashion. So, this is for Madame Chair. Thank you very much, Mohammed, being patient with me.
The main copy now. Yeah. Could we take a recess, please, and I'll, oh, wait a minute, I can't do that.
I like the recess.
I can't do that, it's conflict.
Yeah, give it to me.
Yeah. How many copies do we need? One for every board member, Mr. Karain?
That's a signature, people, 39 people.
Yeah, we got that.
You got, but sorry, I didn't want, yeah. To say, oh, thank you very much, you saved one paper.
We have two things, I have a decision, and a decision.
Yeah, this is more important, this is a decision, it's more your, everything is public record.
We have, we're just waiting, maybe it comes around. We're in recess. Does Catherine, is it, I'd try to read it. Trey, Treyer, want to come up?
Yes.
I hate to say your name, Catherine. Catherine Driva?
Where is, where the street?
Um, I live at 12 Ashu Met Road, Ashu Met Mashpee.
Speak up, please.
Is there a microphone?
No. Speak up.
Okay.
They're redoing the AP in the building, so...
I've never done this before, so.
Okay.
They were saying that access could not come from 130, but section 174 dash 41 Parking Lot Design, so section C, interconnection between parking areas on adjacent commercial properties shall be required where appropriate. I would like to point out this may be a case where it is appropriate. You can share driveway with, is it landscape design supply or something on the other side? Or this corner lot that everyone's referencing is already having entry off 130. The G I S sound interactive map shows high post-contact sensitivity and moderate pre-contact sensitivity. The bylaws, 174 dash 24, so section C3, at the application shall indicate any portions of the site which lie within the areas mapped as high sensitivity, moderate sensitivity on the maps of pre-contact and post-contact archaeological sensitivity, included in the final technical report, the archaeological reconnaissance survey compared with the town mashweed to the public archaeological activity.
Can everyone here, excuse me, Catherine? Is anyone here, right here? Yes?
No.
No.
Speak up.
Speak up, okay.
Talk him to the public here.
Okay, sorry, guys, I'm usually very quiet.
The voting public.
Okay. So, these parcels are, and I have printed maps here, parcels are high post-contact sensitivity and moderate pre-contact sensitivity and that may require traffic studies, water quality impact reports, environmental impact reports, physical impact reports and similar, maybe required. Now, I know you've maybe done water quality, maybe you've done a traffic study, but not really official. I don't know how traffic studies work or if we can get an official one done, because I believe they did the traffic study on the day of the eclipse, which nobody was dragging, because everyone was looking up at the sky. You know, it does increase in the summer. Um, we pull babies, pushing their babies and dogs from the condos to the, the general store. We see kids going to get candy and snacks from the condos to the general store, which is on 130. So, no offense, Ed, but when you said last meeting, like, no one may not typically walk through the condos down 130. I, I live at 12 Ashu Met Road, I am right there. Everyone walks by me, my dogs let me know about it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of foot traffic.
Just so you understand, I believe that the applicant mentioned they did con, they did traffic counts at their existing facility, not at this location. So, they wanted to see how many customers showed up.
Okay.
They talked about having up to 12 customers a day.
Okay.
They wanted to see how many customers showed up and just to substantiate that discussion. So, I believe that's why they did that, is that sound correct, Mr. Karain?
Yeah.
So, I know some people heard, they thought that was the number, the traffic count on Ashu Met Road, that's not what they were saying.
Yeah, the traffic count on Ashu Met Road, baseball field, soccer games, in addition to pickleball, we have dog park. I mean, it just, it never ends, there's always people going from here to the park. There's a playground on here to the park. So, even when there isn't soccer games happening, you have families walking with their little children and dogs all over this area. And it's just, I, I would like to see the access come from 130, is my primary concern. The fence, I'm happy to hear about, because I was worried about noise and I don't want to see big ugly pipes. I live right there, but the fence will help with that, so I am happy with that. I think access 130 is, is something that we could require.
Catherine?
Michelle Brom. I hope I can talk loud enough.
Perfect.
My name is Michelle Brom. I live at 96 Old Colony Drive. Uh, my husband and I have lived in that development since it was built in 1987. Um, there are a couple other people in the neighborhood of the 29 homes. Three of us are original homeowners. Um, I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about today, one of which is, um, Ashu Met Road is so close to so many of the wonderful parts of downtown Mashpee. The Veterans Park, the Memorial Park, the Indian Cemetery right across the street from us, um, the Herring Room, the Indian Museum, the one, the one-room classroom. I mean, from Route 28 down 130 up to Ashu Met Road has really been residential, community, real estate. There's very few businesses, even on Route 130 from Route 28 to Ashu Met Road. Past us, past the ball field, it's really developing into a lot of commercial zone. But I am really worried about a couple of things. I flat-out asked them at your site visit the other day, will 18-wheelers be coming down this road? And someone said, "No," and then they thought about it for a second and said, "Oh, yeah, they are 18-wheelers." Well, I would love to know how an 18-wheeler is going to come down Ashu Met Road and not wipe out Old Colony sign as it's trying to turn into that driveway. And they cannot go to the end, it's a dead-end road. There's nowhere for that 18-wheeler to turn around. So, if he misses his turn, he won't even be able to navigate into the ballparks to turn around, because I can't do it hardly with my stubborn. So, that's another point I want to make. Um, one thing I don't, when was this bylaw actually written? And then, today they're asking you for a special permit? And, um, I'd like someone to explain that to me. And I heard at the beginning, it was a 4,000 square foot building and it was changed to a 6,000 square foot building? Or was it, oh, 6,000?
So, always 6, so it was just mislabeled.
Okay, mistake. All right, and my last point is, along with the other resident on Ashu Met Road, is, I remember when it was Mog Lachness Restaurant, that's how long I lived here. And I remember also when that was a shamble and dilapidated for decades. And it was, three parcels, I think, were posted up on a sign on Route 130 when it went up for sale. Now, there's two businesses that come off of Route 130. There's a lawyer's office and there's the Human Services Building. Now, why aren't they using that access point? When those three, those, actually, those three parcels were owned by the same person way back when. And I think that about covers it, but most of all, I'm worried for our community. I'm worried for that part of our community that's been so wonderful in Mashpee, um, to have our kids ride their bikes down that road when they gotta go to soccer practice, baseball practice, Little League, people bringing their dogs and socializing at the dog park, the pickleball courts. I don't think we need industrial piping on that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. I think, let me, let me say this, I think we should continue this matter at the next meeting. Would you like to speak, Mr. Karain?
Yeah, I guess I would ask, what, what, what more information would you need to, for the reason for a continuance?
Well, I think, I think we, we have to look at some of this.
I mean, I think it's a little unfair to the applicant that said he could submit something at the last minute and now, you know, we're being continued. Um, I mean, all I can say is, is that, you know, we can't, you know, we don't own the actual property. We don't have rights to go into somebody else's parking lot and take access up 130. We ran into this problem.
No, I, that's...
And then, as far as this...
A non-starter.
And then, you know, just quickly, I, the only other two points I want to address with Mr. Price. Uh, I wholeheartedly disagree with his assertion about the zoning bylaw. Section 13 allows, he left out the word wholesale sales. He said he kept parking lot retail, but 13 allows for wholesale sales as well. And plumbing supplies, these are, they may not be toilets and faucets, but they are plumbing supplies. It's water, it's sewage, and plumbing. And it's also, this property is also within the light, light industrial overlay district, which also allows this type of, um, and as far as the groundwater protection overlay district, again, conveniently left out the part that even though it's over 2,500 square feet, if you can provide the information regarding stormwater design, that allows you to still grant the special permit irrespective of the disturbance of 2,500. There's more to that paragraph than just simply, no disturbance on the public. That's all I wanted to say.
Do, are we, are we continuing discussion?
You can't talk there, you can't talk, you've spoken. I think we need to figure out what we're going to do here. We have a closed public hearing at this point. I think, I, go ahead.
All right, at least two weeks ago, we worked with all this stuff we got and see how true it is, if it, if it fits Mr. Price's, and he has the right to do that. I gotta take some time, it's maybe two weeks.
So, I don't want to close the public hearing, because then we couldn't respond to this.
Absolutely.
So, would you be willing to, I, we move for a continuance, keep the public hearing open, and then you respond to this in two weeks and we will vote that night? If you could respond to it before so we could read it?
Absolutely.
I think that would, would help. So, all those in favor of having a continuance of this public hearing, 31 Ashu Met, 474 Main Street till May 1st? Do I have to check? No.
Unfortunately, I have another matter in the town of Born, where there's only one. I, unfortunately, I have another matter in the town of Born before there's only one on May 1st.
Yeah.
I would, let's continue to May 1st and I might have to make arrangements.
Okay, I, I have to check with Evan on the availability because I don't know what time is available. We've got a bunch of other things on that, on that evening. Um, I think I can bring them back in now because we're, we're done talking about it.
Well, you're a vote.
But we, no, we have to.
Continue to hear.
We have to continue.
I have a motion to convene the public hearing Tuesday, 7/10, May 1st.
Well, I don't think 7/10 is available.
So a time to be determined.
Okay, okay. All those in, any second?
Discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Did you get all that paperwork?
Uh, I would like to, I, I can check the calendar, the office if I need any, yes. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'll, I'll get Evan.
Okay. Thank you. Please contact, contact. That's important. Am I wrong? Well, somebody, somebody's here. Somebody's coming in. It feels like that part was ignored because the government took their man. Let's bring it up, somebody will want to do it. Okay. 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 Perfect. Let's do it. This is, this is an interactive town map of Dale County.
Okay, I'm going over the public hearing. Uh, oh, actually. No, it's, uh, we're going to. Evan's here. Do you have to be a minute? It's low, the low key guy just. Ed, I'm, I'll go to you next, okay? If you wish.
Uh, yeah, there's a couple items that I can maybe answer or go through.
Okay, well, let me just, I need a time. We've already moved to continue this last hearing, but I don't have what time on May 1 that it's available. We've got so many things going on.
May 1 is wide open because the two hearings that I needed, that the previous scheduled, I need the board to reschedule. So May 1st is wide open.
Okay. So we say, uh.
It is, uh, December 17th.
We need to, I need to have them re-vote to establish the new Seabury hearing to April 7th, excuse me, May 17th because of notice issues. Uh, it did get into.
You're gonna do that tonight?
Yes, the, I'm gonna ask the board to make a motion.
Okay.
All right, so we made a motion, have a public, continue the public hearing, May 1st and 7/10.
Okay.
Yes, yes, May 15.
All right, we've already, we, we've already said to be determined. Okay, fine.
So we haven't talked about that yet.
While, while we're here, before we just get on, Evan, could you just, um, oh, we're gonna come, never mind, we'll come to that. Uh, we're coming back to, this should be quick, Evan, we're coming back to the public hearing on the warrant article, which is continued. Um, it's now 20 of, perfect timing. Now, notice is perfect timing, but it's 20 of nine. Um, to review warrant article 28 proposed for action 26, 2024 town meeting. I previously read the Mashpee, uh, public hearing notice and I guess.
Are you opening up the hearing?
I'm opening the public hearing at 7.
Was it already open?
It was open, it's continued. Yeah, right. Yeah, so now we're opening it. Comments from the planning board with respect to this article. This is the, uh, indoor recreational facility, uh, that we're gonna be moving to go to town meeting to amend the bylaw to allow, allow this property in the I-1 zone.
I have no comments.
I have no comment either. Do you have any comment? Rob, do you have any comment on this?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, can we take a vote?
I, I ask for comments from the public.
Any comment from the public about this warrant article? It's, it's about a recreation facility, um, is it on Echo Road?
Well, it's, uh, the warrant article came about because of a development proposal contemplated on Evergreen Circle.
Evergreen Circle.
Uh, but again, the article applies to the entire I-1 zoning district, not a singular property.
Right.
And can you show us again where the I-1 is on the map?
It's in purple areas.
And there's a little bit up there.
Yes.
So it's just gonna allow indoor recreational facilities.
Right. Does anybody wish to speak for or against on that? No comment? Take a motion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
Any discussion?
All right.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
I make a motion to recommend town meeting approve this, uh, warrant article.
Seven.
Is that right?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Rob, did you vote?
Maybe I voted.
Oh, you can't vote, I'm sorry.
I, I don't think I can vote.
Oh, that's correct.
Right.
All right, thank you. Ed, you want me to, um, go over your invoices?
So there are two items, Madam Chair, that are, I'm on the bo- agenda for. One is the Board Engineer Report for Project Review and Inspection. So I'm, I'm preparing a review for the New Seabury Project, which I just heard from Evan, needs to be rescheduled on the hearing agenda calendar to May 15th.
Right.
Which is great for me, gives me a little more time to finish writing, but I did make a site visit down there. Um, uh, it, it's a vacant parcel. There are a couple of existing dwellings on the, on the parcel, on the property that they're building around essentially, but they're, uh, proposing a new small, um, you know, single-family dwelling, uh, subdivision. And I'll prepare a report for that, uh, prior to your, your May 15th, probably a week before. Try to get it done in the next week or so.
Okay.
Just to get it out of the way. Um, but yeah, there are no other. I have prepared and done inspections for the zoning board of an Evergreen Circle, ironically, I don't talk about Evergreen Circle, but that's the only one. So I don't really have anything else there. I wanted to stay here and just do two things. One was to answer any questions you may have on the invoices that Evan's had a chance to look at. And, uh, I would stay, if you'd like me to, to, um, if you needed to address me on any questions you may have when you deliberate on the Crinquissit Road, excuse me, the 75, uh, yeah, Crinquissit Road, the Cranberry Point project that you're about to, uh, continue your deliberation on.
Okay.
After that, I was gonna ask you if I could depart, if I would depart, um, because I'm traveling in the morning and would love to get out.
Yes, I, I think you can depart. I'll go over your invoices now, we'll see how.
Okay.
The board feels. Okay, the invoices, uh, we've got Country Club Estates Construction Inspection Services, Engineering Professional Services, June 24, 23 to March 25, 24.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for payment of $4,108.10.
Okay, seven. Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Second one is Cranberry Point Willow Bend to 75 Crinquissit Avenue, Engineering Review Services, Engineering Professional Services, June 24, 23 to February 24, 24. Motion?
I make a motion to approve the payment of this invoice for $3,312.48.
Okay, seven. Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Second one is Cranberry Point Willow Bend to 75 Crinquissit Avenue, Engineering Review Services, Engineering Professional Services, November 2nd, 2023 to March 25, 24. Motion?
I make a motion to approve the payment of this invoice for $3,312.48.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, invoice, New Seabury Phase 4 and others, Construction Inspection and Project Review Services, Engineering Professional Services, March 25, 2023 to March 25, 24.
I make a motion to pay this invoice for $1,749.64.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Unanimous. Oakway Highlands Construction Inspection Services, Engineering Professional Services, November 1, 2023 to March 25, 24.
I make a motion to pay this invoice for $27.88.
Seven.
Any discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye.
All of you unanimous? Last one is Willow Circle and, uh, peer review, Construction Inspection Services, Engineering Professional Services, November 2, 2023 through March 25, 24.
I make a motion to pay this invoice for $80.
Seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, did we finish the warrant article?
Yeah.
Yeah, we took the vote to recommend it, so that's great.
Okay. Review and make recommendation regarding the road taking plans submitted by petition from the South Cape Beach Homeland Association to convert the roads Chickadee Road, Debbie Lane, Manitoba Road, Mete Comet Road, Nahai- Nahain?
Nahain.
Nahain Road, Neshalbee Road, Aniak Road, Sanmase Road, Palmistick Road and Whopper Will Circle from private roads to public roads under consideration at the May Town meeting.
I'm gonna have to excuse myself.
Pardon me?
I gotta leave because that's my street.
Oh, you're right, you're right. Gosh, we've got more conflicts going here. Okay.
It's been like this in years. This is so weird.
Um, I will read the letter, uh, that she sent to Terry Cook and copied Rodney Collins and.
Oh, who's the letter from?
Catherine.
Catherine Maron. Uh, good morning. This is about the South Cape Estates update on road takings. As discussed, the roads in South Cape Estates are located in their entirety in the flood plain. DEP confirmed that the project would have to file a notice of intent and would have to plan with their stormwater standards. The proposed changes to the DEP regulation are increasing these standards. I spoke with Raoul Lizardi Rivera, Director of Engineering for Cape Town Islands Engineering, to ask his opinion on potential costs. While I included a budget number of $800,000 for drainage improvements, he concurs that it is difficult at this point to know whether the $800,000 would be sufficient as engineering design plans have not been prepared. I am therefore recommending, to put this in bold, that this article be indefinitely Non-bold, the postponement would allow for a new estimate to be, the postponement would allow for a new estimate to be prepared and a new public hearing with property owners. As you know, the estimate provided by the town is the maximum cost that can be included in a benefit to the property owners. Any construction cost above this amount would have to be paid by the town. While there was, will still not be engineering design plans for the drainage plan, the first petition does not fund these land force grant, the estimate can be adjusted to allow additional funds for permitting and engineering design as well as a higher contingency for the product, project to cover any unanticipated costs. Town Planner, does this layout of the plan comport with Mashpee zoning rules and regs of subdivision of land as per Select Board Policy 80?
You're not looking at zoning regulations, but you're looking at your subdivision rules and regulations for a few checklist items, which are that the layout has the, shows the existing or proposed boundary lines, in this case, existing, a north arrow, a date of the survey applicable. These rotating plans were prepared from existing plans of record and not from an on-the-ground survey, a signature and stamp from a registered land surveyor, a scale at one inches equals 40 feet, names of all butters, um, shown on the budding lots from the local areas of access, existing lines of streets, ways and easements, uh, and lot numbers, dimensions and area. This wouldn't be applicable with the road taking out a subdivision, um, and whether a street is public or private and its name. Um, I am satisfied that each of these criteria have been met, um, with one exception that's unique, I think, in the road conversion. It doesn't list whether or not the streets are public or private. They're currently private, they're being converted to public. I don't know if we should list on the plan that they're now public.
I would agree with the group, I've said it before, so.
So that is the only item of note.
Okay. Um, so are we within our rights to recommend the article be indefinitely postponed?
Um, I think you could, the, the Select Board Policy has you affirm that the plan is prepared in accordance with the subdivision rules and regulations, which I think you can do, but I certainly also think, uh, the board could, uh, include in their motion, uh, some sort of recommendation relative to indefinite postponement. Your charge is specific to the adequacy of the preparation of the plan.
Yeah, because you said the, the plante charge is the maximum amount, they could put themselves in line.
So if the, if the plan is to go to a future town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, you could affirm that the plan is prepared exactly, but that you would recommend indefinite postponement based on the DPW records recommendation.
Okay, can you take a motion?
I, I would move that we support a recommendation to postpone.
Well, we have to say that the plan follows the, I don't know what the words are, the subdivision rules.
Uh, the plan conforms with the, uh, the plan submission requirements, the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and, as required by Select Board Policy 80.
80.
Um, pertaining to road injuries.
Did everybody hear that?
That's exactly what I said.
And.
You also embraced Catherine Maron's recommendation that we recommend that it's indefinitely postponed.
The article be indefinitely postponed.
Would you like to second that or would you want?
That sounds exactly perfect.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
No, me?
Vote?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Rob? Rob, did you?
Yes, yes.
Did you hear?
I got it.
You got it?
Yeah, well, I'm here.
Did you hear what we were talking about?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, what is your vote?
We say.
I say postponed, yes.
Okay, you say, you, our motion is yes, you agree.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, passed.
Unanimous.
All right, that's the item, we'll send it down.
Okay, the next one is, review and make recommendation regarding the road taking plans submitted by the Select Board to convert Christopher Lane from a private way to a public way under consideration at the May Town meeting.
My same comments apply to this as the other.
Same comment, because the layout plan, which we've looked at, comport with all Mashpee rules and regs and subdivision.
With the same exception I noted for the prior application relative to listing the street as public or private, um, and I would note that these are draft plans that don't have the signature and stamp of the registered land surveyors before they are recorded and, and it's signed by the Select Board, will now affirm that they shouldn't sign that plan until it is stamped and signed by the registered land surveyor.
Okay, so what we're saying is, we're making a recommendation, recommending.
Based on the fact that they comport with our.
Rules and regulations, uh, governing the subdivision of land.
Right.
On the condition that the final plans are.
Be stamped before this.
This one is, pardon me, the other one wasn't. This plan is adequately stamped.
Oh, well, no, I see, I don't have that, I just have this one.
You'll note on that plan, the stamp and seal.
Oh, okay.
Of the surveyor, right there.
Okay. Do you need a magnifying glass to see it?
So that's, so, so that's moved now, it's stamped.
Um, yes, that, that is the only condition I would have imposed, otherwise the plan is satisfactory in accordance with the rules and regs.
And we want to make a recommendation that, 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 uh, town meeting takes it.
If, if that's the board's recommendation. But yes, you would need to make a recommendation, affirm that the plan is adequate and.
And we make a recommendation regarding the road taking of... Submitted by the plan, submitted by the plan board to convert Christopher Lane from a private way to a public way to be considered at the Maytown meeting. All those in favor?
I made that motion.
Second.
And he seconded it.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Rob said aye.
Rob, you take yes.
I said yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go find out.
The last one, we did the engineers' invoices, so the next one is consideration of Department of Natural Resources request for a letter of support for its application for funding to the municipal vulnerability preparedness program. The project is seeking funding to carry out upcoming phases of the Santu Town Landing Construction and Community Outreach Project. The board may vote to submit a letter of support. And she, in her letter, signed by Ashley Fisher, she's asking for us to take a look at, you know, the, I guess this is a proposed letter to be sent to Karen Runston, Municipal Vulnerable Preparedness Program Director, and cite our organization and any information that we want to add in a paragraph where it's highlighted. You know, so we use this as a format or template and then put our little personal touch there. So does anybody make a motion?
I have a motion and we support Ashley Fisher's request for a letter of support.
A letter of support to?
Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program Manager, Karen Elson.
And what would we say for our organization specifics? Do we need to put something in there?
The planning board.
She requested a letter of support from the planning board, right?
Yes.
No, so right here, where it says organization specifics, should we say that, describe that the planning board does? Or is it enough that we're just like?
Well, that we have an interest in water quality. I mean, that's up to you what you think you should write about.
I would probably suggest the project's conformance with your plans, such as the MVP action plan we came up with through our community resilience building workshops, hazard mitigation plan, and any relevant LCP engagement that we've done.
So the project is in compliance?
Consistent with.
Is consistent.
The goals of long-range plans, including...
The long-range goals, right? Long-range goals, is that what you said?
Yeah, established in.
Established in.
Or, because some of these plans aren't adopted yet, that's what I...
Identified.
Identified through the board's community engagement work.
Why don't you just write it and then show us?
No, this is good of doing engagement.
Work, no, we can get this done. Community engagement work that supported the recent updates to the Hazard Mitigation Plan, Local Comprehensive Plan, and our MVP Action Plan.
What was the last one, LCP and?
The Municipal Vulnerable, the MVP Action Plan. That might not be the right title.
And then in the space where it says Department or Organization, we put the planning board.
Planning board.
And then signed by the chair.
Okay, so when you've got it, I'll come in and sign it and...
Make a motion that we send that letter of recommendation as amended and authorize the chair to work with the town planner to finalize the final version and sign it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One second, okay.
If you want me to move.
You know.
Thank you, that's good. And then, look at the plan. Look at that, that's gonna be sweet.
Okay, we are at the old business. We're at continued deliberation and potential vote on the two seventy five Point Acquisite Avenue application submitted by Southwood Management Properties LLC to modify the Willow and Country Club's special permit. And we have here the draft planning board decision on the modifications with changes that have been made by the planning board the last time we were here. And then we have a copy of the draft, the original draft that Evan wrote, which was changed by draft two, which is... Let's see, how would we... This is the draft that was marked up, this is draft two. These were the changes that we agree on. And draft three is town council's changes. What I recommend is we have Evan put this all together for us if we have further review tonight and we get a final clean copy like this week or the end of this week and then we bring it back May first and we vote. Because I don't think we should be looking at different copies until we know, you know, what we have.
I also have people that asked for documentation, some of the facts.
Yes.
So I have them here. How shared, do you want to pass them on? There's four things.
Four things?
Um, so you took all copies of that thing.
Wait a minute.
Oh, you'd have, oh, four copies of each one?
So, all right, so if you don't mind, I'll have, I'll watch them.
I thought it was like four separate.
No.
So do we need to go over, we should go over these tonight?
No, you can take these.
Okay.
Do you want a copy?
Sure.
So take one, pass it on. Just remember we were talking about dates and numbers and stuff like that.
By the way, board, to the rest of the board, we are permitted pursuant to town council to ask questions about dates and numbers. These are not subs, these things were already in the public record. We can't deliberate with town planner or Ed. That's the rule. So we will follow that rule with the next meetings going forward. And I guess we're gonna have quite a number of special permits.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
This is Rob. And I'll be back on Tuesday and I'll pick up all the handouts and go over them before the May first meeting.
Okay, so we'll gather a packet for you and pick it up in Evan's office.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you do that? And these are, these are...
Take one, take one of each of them.
Take one.
And they're all on our, I mean, they're all on the website, anyways, I just took out the other papers.
All right, so we take a motion that we will finalize the special permit decision. And, well, Evan, you will put it all together for us.
It's already been merged.
Wait, but is town council merged in?
Yes, we have it merged, it's just that they're showing the track changes in one document. So yes, we do another.
Okay, so would you want to have the track changes and then the final clean copy? Is that the best way to do it?
Whatever the board's preference is.
That's, that's what I...
I certainly have a clean copy available.
Clean copy of the tri. So I take a motion, Mary.
Oh, I take a motion to follow the plan of the chair and put this on the agenda for May first and ask the staff to give us our final clean copy and a redline copy.
Okay, and I just add to that, which we don't want to add, put in the motion, just that we get it a little early so we can actually go over everything by ourselves.
It's in your packet tonight, I'll provide a clean copy tomorrow.
Oh, it's in our?
Yep, and you'll see, there's a note, combined town council and planning board comments.
Okay, well, I picked up my packet earlier, so I wondered if I didn't get that.
No worries.
Okay, no worries, okay, enough, oh.
So it says...
Oh, okay.
Oh, this is mine. But that's the one you have.
That's what I don't have.
Oh, okay.
And if you, it's in the packet that Karen Leslie sent out. And if you print it off of there, it'll come out in color. Do you know what I mean? Anyways, I have a motion on the...
All right, second.
Okay.
There's a second.
Second.
All those, any discussion? None? All of them favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye.
Oh, unanimous. Okay, so, what a mess, what a mess. Project engineer, it's gone, we all have it.
We did that, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we didn't do, continue review of draft implementation table of the LCP.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, you're, you're here, okay.
Yep, I just figured I'd stick around in case anybody had a question on anything you wanted to break. Obviously, it would be a whole bunch of decisions first.
Okay.
Draft decisions.
Okay, all right, so draft, review of draft implementation table of the Local Comprehensive Plan. So, oh my gosh. I'm gonna look on it, I have it, but, oh boy. Okay, you want to, you know, start? Oh, okay, I'm ready. Tom, can I?
So again, this is, this one section represents the merged document of Water and Coastal Resources and Natural Resources into a similar chapter.
Yes.
And so when I did that merge, every single goal policy and action in the Water and Coastal Resources chapter was repeated in the Natural Resources chapter. So there's nothing really new here, it's just in one place.
Right.
And so there are additional goals from the Water chapter that are back in, additional policies, and of course, the actions. But I really don't have anything specific to go over, I wanted to have you see it merged. There are a few items that I want to review in relation to the nearly completed harbor management plan draft that's gonna go to the state for review and certification.
So this reminds you of water quality and natural resources in one document.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, comments on this consolidation? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, so I think we should have one major overriding goal, which is just protect and improve all of Mashpee's natural resources. And I don't, you know, besides, you know, of course, going through and making sure that policies are your policies should be and actions are our actions and goals, you know what I mean? I don't have any comments on any goals. I do when we get down to policies, but I don't want to rush anything.
I've looked at this many times, I think it's very good. Does anybody have any questions about the goals?
No.
No questions? Do you have, Rob, you have a question? I don't hear you. We have a...
No.
Okay.
No, no question.
I think at this point on this section, if people have specific comments on policies or on actions or whatever it might be, send them to me, I'll include them in the draft because you're gonna keep, you're gonna review the plan in value at some point.
Okay, let's make a motion.
This one, I'm ready to move on to other sections. But if you feel like...
I've got some.
Yeah, I'm ready to listen.
They're really, they're really easy and I think people should hear them. Yeah, there was a, there was a goal or a policy or an action from our previous LCP, which was preserve fifty percent of the remaining undeveloped land in town as open space. I think we should continue that. What's the language? It's preserve fifty percent of the remaining undeveloped land in town as open space. So that was a goal that was in, that's in our current LCP, and I think we should continue that. Policy NR three, I think it's a Scrivener's era. It's not ancient ways to water, it's ancient ways and public ways to water. They're two different things. And policy R nine, I think it should be identify and maximize funding opportunities for projects. Priority list of wetlands and rivers for restoration. We know we want to restore our wetlands, we want to restore our rivers, but we don't have a priority list.
So the only relevant action is NR five, continue acquisition of conservation lands for the priority in areas with high environmental sensitivity or areas adjacent to other open space while the refuge and or conservation then reach our areas. It doesn't really talk about restoration, it talks about the acquisition and preparation for restoration.
We should develop a priority list of wetlands and rivers earmarked for restoration.
If you could add acquisitional and preservational, same action.
And then, right, and then secure the funds to restore said wetlands and rivers. I think one of the big actions needs to be that re-establishment or an establishment of a land acquisition committee or a land trust.
So many of these will be repeated in the open space chapter. If you want to have them both in both places, just be aware that they'll be in the open space chapter as well.
So that, remember how we talked about that and sent a letter, I don't know, three years ago, four years ago, to the Select Board asking them to establish such a committee, like a land acquisition committee? So I think that should be an action. And where in the plan, you know how, you know how UMass Dutton does all that water testing? Is that, is that in the plan to continue that?
Yeah, we have...
And NR one, water quality, long-range testing programs.
Number two. Well, guess what, we're gonna have to do it because the paper I'm gonna hand out to you is telling us that we've got to do things about our water quality.
So it's in there.
You could say, you could do, well, let me, let me hand this out to you. I just highlighted where you could...
You know what I mean? Like, we should, we should continue and fund our current water testing programs, such as what the tribe does and what UMass Dutton. I just have, I just have three more, Karen, and then I can...
Well, I want to cover this because I've got something very relevant. No, this is not... Oh, Mary. No, I'm just thinking we'll get some language in here. This is, this brand-new thing, look at the date. April, I think it's April ninth, where's the date? April, April twelfth, okay, hot off the press. Oh, wait a minute. It's talking about measurements. On page two. Oh, no, here's where we want it, two, but... Page...
Oh, I see, it's highlighted.
One, two, three, four, on the fourth page, this is what we're gonna have to do here. The EPA estimates all public water systems have three years to complete their initial monitoring for these chemicals. They must inform the public of the levels of PFAS measured in drinking water. And they're telling you the amounts, which is, where it says more detail about the last sentence down there. More detail, it's telling you what, what the measurement's gonna be. So that's on the second to the last page.
Page five, I think it's on the one.
Yeah. EPA, enforceable maximum contaminants, four parts per trillion, and these other chemicals. In other words, they're bringing in a whole... chemicals. In other words, they're bringing in a whole host of PFAS chemicals, 10 parts per trillion. So that, that should be put in there, something like that, to, to follow the, what's it called? The national drinking water standard on PFAS pollution.
So, so meet any new PFAS that will set by the state or federal government?
By the state or federal government? Now, I don't know, because the fed, the state had lower PFAS levels than the federal government. Now, I think the federal government has come down. Do you remember what they were?
Okay.
Well, this is the law of the land now, so, you know, we have to put something like that in there.
Would that go in this, or do we have a water chapter?
This is merged. The water chapter is merged.
So we need to, we need to have a policy that we're going to meet.
The National Drinking Water Standard as at, the EPA, the federal EPA, National Drinking Water Stand, promulgated, I don't know if you want to say 412, 24.
We should, yeah, and, and any state standards.
And, yeah.
You'll note I have a comment in the draft next to action NR6, which is implement water quality improvement measures as recommended upon completion of the Mashpee Winkie Diagnostic Study. And the question really is about the issue of John's pond PFAS issues.
So do we.
That we don't necessarily have a specific action in this plan.
We don't have a specific action?
Well, I think we should have an action. We currently do not.
Yeah, so what do we add it either to NR6 or?
Add a new action. I don't know what the action is here, despite my point. I don't know if there needs to be additional research, or it's just coordinating with the base on improvement measures, or, or what funding mechanisms we would need to take advantage of. But I think we would be remiss not to include it.
Should we coordinate with the water district, Mashpee Water District?
Sure.
Do you prefer that we're meeting all? Federal drinking water standards, state drinking water standards for PFAS?
State. I think if we meet this, we're meeting the state. Four is the number, I remember, four trillion, four parts per trillion.
Cool.
Okay, that was the Chairman's report.
Oh, wait, I'm, I'm not done. Karen.
Town Planner?
Karen, I'm not done.
A few more to go through.
Yeah, I, I, it's just a few. Well, you've been waiting for these comments, so I want to get them to you.
Anywhere in here, it talks about, and it probably, it probably is in here, but the implementation of our comprehensive wastewater management?
Uh, it, it does. Let me just see what the specificity is.
NR4. NR4.
Construct wastewater treatment facility and wastewater collection system consistent with the water management plan as a management plan.
So you think that's enough? Is there anything in the, the plan that, that goes beyond that?
Both shellfish and.
So I think we should implement the plan. I think we should have that as a separate item, or have it both in there.
What was that?
That, it's, it's our overriding comprehensive wastewater management plan. So, so Evan reminded me here, it involves shellfish, the ways, the building of the wastewater treatment facilities, the pipes in the ground. It could, it could end up, you know, as it gets modified, it could end up up with anything. All right, just four more things. So the action item for the ancient ways and the ways to water is identify all, we want to identify all ancient ways and ways to water and document the legal rights to access. And then acquire land to establish the public ways to water. So it would be identify all ancient ways and ways to water and document the legal access. Because remember, there's been some staffing changes, and so we have, people are re-researching them, but anyways.
Just note, action NR22, actually included two actions in that single cell. So NR22 is identify, preserve, and enhance ancient and public waste water with particular focus on those identified in ID, 1998 coastal resources element. So I would add identify, preserve, and enhance ancient public waste to water and document the legal access to those ways to water with a particular focus on those areas.
Thank you. And if you could just put enhance ancient ways and public ways to water. Sorry.
Yeah.
And can we put in, including acquisition of land to establish, or do we have that somewhere?
Well, there's a. There's, there's discussion about acquisition, but not necessarily specific for ancient way act, like, or public access.
I think that Ashley was talking about.
NR5.
Possibly, yeah, I think it's in here.
NR5 is acquisition of conservation land.
So we want to, we, Ashley.
NR10.
And, sorry.
Continue to investigate and ensure legal status of common public landings and access to coastal water in great constant development access plan.
And can we say?
Worth of precious parcels if feasible to manate and, or NR11.
Thank you. All right, I'm done. Thank you. I've gone over this like five times, and I keep losing my notes. Now you have one to lose.
I just had enclosure on that. I did collect all the data. I need to update the municipal facilities, buildings, facilities and services chapter and related departments. Notably, Human Services is redrafting that section because it's very sparse. And, but those chapters should be completed for me in the next couple of weeks, including the implementation table. And so we are really through the bulk of the major chapters, which are housing, economic development, transportation, and natural resources. We still have important chapters to go through. Don't get me wrong, but I feel those are, I think, less robust chapters. So I'm going to keep pushing forward. You don't have to finish me.
Can you lay a report on harbor management planning committee?
Um, we met a month, three weeks ago or so to go, begin going through the draft plan. I provided some comments, notably relative to the discussion in the plan that pertained to the Papanes overlay district and non-conforming structures there, as well as the way the plan considered the New Seabury Special Permit area. It didn't get it quite right, so I provided some comment relative to all two things. And we're meeting at the end of this month specifically to go over the implementation portion of the plan.
Okay. Housing production update?
Um, we're finalizing the changes that were requested by the Affordable Housing Committee. That hasn't been completed yet. My goal hasn't changed from the last time I updated you on this with hopes of getting it to you both. I would, I think it would be preferable, because I only have one more meeting. I can, this is four. It would be great to get the Select Board to join me jointly with you again for the final.
That was great.
Review.
Yeah.
Because I'd rather, she asked me which I'd prefer her to be at, and I'd prefer her to be at both. So I'd rather be collectively with her. So I'll ask John Cotton if that's acceptable to him for late May.
Thank you. I wanted to do it after all our busyness in May.
So maybe the second meeting in May or first meeting in June.
Okay. We have some additional topics not reasonably anticipated.
Join you board meeting, member of committee.
Oh, sorry.
Report meeting.
Kid pledge commission.
No report.
Charter.
Try to review committee. So we have a survey out. It's still out. You can still take it. It, all surveys are due April 21st.
How many times can we take this?
Once.
Community preservation.
So the community preservation committee met last week. They went into executive session. They came out of executive session and voted to, to, you know, keep the warrant article on the warrant to buy land in Pecoril Cove and to place the full amount of all the appraisals and to give me ID breakdowns, so that the town would have the ability to purchase all 17 acres.
Nice.
Okay. So what happens is, if I understand this right, the money is authorized, and the warrant article says that going forward, either the Select Board can go forward with the purchase, or, you know, the, the, the community preservation committee can still be in charge. So it gives that option. It's either the Select Board or the community preservation committee that goes forward with finalizing the purchase. But this would authorize the funds.
All 17?
For all 17.
That's great.
Nice.
So, and of course, you can't, you can't spend more than the appraised value. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's not like we would overpay. So it's, puts the money in the bank.
Nice, that's great.
Yeah. And, and that was it.
No, no design review, plan review?
No, we didn't meet.
EOC?
No meeting.
No meeting. Historic District Commission?
We met, and we discussed assuming goal.
Right.
And we voted to accept it, you know?
Yeah.
We need some changes to make the bill look more like residential, who's not a behavior division.
Um, so for the items not reasonably anticipated, you had previously established public hearing dates, one for the tree by law on May 1st, second for New Seabury's public hearings. Yeah, in my absence, we, the advertisements in the newspaper didn't get out in the time of the fashion. And so I need to, I need to get them in the newspaper for this Friday to, for May 7, your May 15th meeting. So I was, I had asked Karen if she would entertain a motion from the Board to add those items to the agenda, to reschedule those public hearings.
So.
And just one final note for the tree by law uniquely, I was, I issued a press release to begin enforcement in early May. I want to stick with early May.
May 1.
I, in fact, I'm having information sessions beginning tomorrow. And so I don't want to wait till your May 15th meeting to have a public hearing to establish the fees, because I want to be getting collective fees at the time of beginning accepting applications. So if the Board is able to meet with me, or at least inform of the Board on Friday, May 3rd, for a very brief public hearing to set the fees, I would be appreciative.
Does that have to be televised?
Um, it doesn't need to be televised. Very, this is a really simple administrative matter.
Tree, uh.
And just as a reminder too, in the tree by law, you are the entity who can promulgate rules and regulations about the form and content of applications and the fees. Most of that is dealt with in the article itself, but we need to establish the fees.
Okay, so what, what time on Friday, May?
I'm available.
I don't play a lot.
Is that, is nine o'clock too early?
No.
Nine AM Friday?
May 3rd.
May 3rd for the tree by law, and May 15th for the sea, New Seaberry application. What time?
7:10.
7:10, okay.
So we don't need to put anything on May 1st for the tree by law? On May 15?
I don't have time to advertise it for May 1st, so I'm asking to set a special meeting on 5:03 for tree by law.
Okay.
Okay, so can I do the motion? Because I've already written it in.
So I make a motion that we have our public hearing on the tree by law fees on May 3rd at 9:00 AM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I make, oh, no, I'm sorry. I have to go back.
You need to make a motion to add these items to the agenda.
Motion to add topics not reasonably anticipated.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we add by roll call vote the following two items. Setting a time for the public hearing on fees related to the tree by law and set a time for the public hearing on the New Seaberry.
Uh, cluster subdivision application, property address along River.
Is that the, is that the Osprey?
Osprey Court.
For Osprey Court. And that, okay, so we need to, I made the motion by, that by roll call vote, we add these two items to the agenda.
Did you say 7:10?
Nope, we have to just add them to the agenda first.
This agenda, that you're in.
Yeah, all those in favor of adding these.
Two items.
Two items to our, to, to our agenda of April 17, 2024 Mashpee, or Mashpee Planning Board agenda.
By roll call vote. So you have to call us.
By roll, okay.
So you have to say Mary?
Mary?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Karen, aye.
Aye.
Dale, aye. And Rob?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, then I make a motion that we set the public hearing on the, is it a definitive subdivision of the new?
And special permit.
And special permit.
So we do 7:10 and 7:15 respectively. Special permit first, 7:10, subdivision 7:15.
So I make a motion that we set a public hearing for the special permit for the New Seaberry Osprey Court definitive subdivision, right, on May 15th at 7:10.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I make a motion.
Aye.
That we have a public hearing for the New Seaberry Osprey Court definitive subdivision.
Plan.
Plan. At 7:15 on May 15th.
Seven 10.
All of you? Aye. Okay, last one. I make a motion that we set a public hearing on the tree by law fee schedule for Friday, May 3rd at 9:00 AM.
Special hearing or public hearing?
It's a public hearing on the tree by law fee schedule.
And who's available? Mary, Mike, you're available?
You can do it by Zoom if you have.
I can?
Okay. Not available. Maybe I'll run it.
And Dale, I understand if you might be working, but if you are available, please join us.
So it's May 3rd at 9?
Yes.
Did we vote?
No.
Where are we?
All those in favor?
It'll probably be in the J-Boo conference room downstairs, but I will confirm that for you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's nice to get that.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Do we have?
We're all alone. Oh, Alex and Chris.